Ladies and gentlemen, please do stand before me, this worship of me, councillor Kent Stevenson.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be serious. I am required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services who would be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. It is with great sadness that I inform members that councillor David Townsley passed away on Tuesday. David served as a member of the Caledonian East Boulden Ward from 2016. Our thoughts and prayers are with David's family at this sad time. As members will be aware, Ian Harpers, a former member of South Tyneside Council sadly passed away recently. Ian served as a member of the Heaven North Ward from 2011 to 2015. Can I invite the leader of the council to say a few words?
Well, Mr Mayor, on behalf of the council members and officers this afternoon, we begin our deliberations on that sad news that has impacted Ian Harpers and David Townsley. Both men who gave their time to public service and both tragically taken from us at a relatively young age. Ian Harpers, although he didn't live in Heaven, was determined that the Heaven North Ward, which at the time was represented by three little democrats, was absolutely determined that the Labour's voice should be heard in that area. And he fought a very hard campaign, an unfair campaign, an election campaign which was without a anchor, and he won that seat. And he was a very quiet man and a very unassuming man in many ways, but he was quite tenacious and often made his way to my office in requesting support for certain projects, certain initiatives. In his own manner, he was an extremely diligent and passionate advocate of the residents of Heaven North. David Townsley, of course, was one of those people who, in some respects, we don't have enough of in local government, and it is someone who came from the private sector. David understood the business community, he was an entrepreneur, and he understood the need to develop strategies, to develop skills for our young people so that the needs of employers in the future could be met. And it was for that reason I was delighted to appoint him as the chair of the new skills plan in May, and he was really looking forward to undertaking that role and helping the young people of the borough seize the opportunities of the new jobs which are coming via the Advanced Manufacturing Park and in other areas. The Labour Party has lost two of its own, but we remember that two families are grieving because they've lost their own as well. And the thoughts and prayers of the South Tyneside Council are with both families at this sad time, isn't it?
Thank you, can I ask members to stand for a minute's silence in memory of councillor David Townsley and Ian Harpers? Thank you, please take a seat.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know that good times shall be passed away, but I'm here to give him from day one. And David Townsley did not fall apart, but I will say that he's absolutely a gentleman. Absolutely, and we're all wishing well put aside the commissary issues we'll see for ourselves to resolve.
Thank you councillor Milburn, thank you. The first item of business is declarations of interest, no declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of council of the 6th of September 2018, are they accepted as a true record?
Agreed.
The next business is mayors' communications, there are no mayors' communications to report on this occasion. The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health on the marketplace. Improved support for children looked after and care leavers. I will ask councillor Moira Smith to formally move the report, councillor Smith?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to present to members the goals for you of the new office meeting space, the children services and also our children looked after and care leaders. As members will be aware, in November 2017, Ofsted found our children services to be built without sadly features. This resulted in the need to promote education accepted in South Tyneside in their lives with North Tyneside as a region's first partnering practice. As part of our collective fitness, as corporate parents of children and young people, in response to their requests and in support for our ambitions to deliver outstanding services to all children and young people, we have brought services together and created a space for children and young people. Throughout the process, officers consulted with young people on what they wanted out of our new workroom and even helped to choose a name for the new building, The Market Place. The Market Place is a new offer for our children looked after and care leaders. It is central for transport lifts and houses keep services, bringing together teams who would guide young children and young people with their parents and with families who adopt them. Located next to the word in the heart of South Shields Town Centre, The Market Place provides excellent leads to local businesses retail and transport. The Market Place is now home to our fostering and introduction services, the virtual school who offers educational children looked after, our social work teams for children and care leaders without participation and engagement. A new service and workplace that also offers such a brilliant view. This new service was formed as part of a partnering practice and as for children and care and care leaders to access better education and employment opportunities. Their services will not only work for the local market, provide extra opportunities, but will also work for young people to enhance their skills and showing they are ready. Officially opened by the mayor on 24th of September, The Market Place marks the next step in our vision to give every child the best starting life. I would like for us members to give their endorsement of the positive work we are doing inside Tyneside by the children and young people. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report, councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am happy to support this report, I think it shows the council's courage to our young people and especially those that are vulnerable. I also think removing all of these things outside the location instead of being dispersed everywhere is a sensible one. On a second note, on the subject of the town centre, I know that the town's shop on King Street put up a man's bed. I appreciate that we are in the middle of a council 365 project including the current building of the interchange, which is very busy. However, one thing missing from the town is where Trump and Trump and Joe Portman were in front of a high street. But can the council tell me why when they continue using free car park, why won't they consider free car parking to make our town more business friendly? Perhaps spending the £30,000 pound in cavalry could be started in paper, thank you.
Does any of our member wish to speak on that?
Well, I mean, there is no evidence councillor Milburn, that free car parking would actually lead to an upturn then. There is no evidence of that. There is free car parking in South Shields Town Centre already. And the simple fact is that all of the money which is raised through car parking in South Shields and Elstonbury is reinvested in the service. So in order to make sure that the car parks are maintained to a proper standard and that they are secure, we reinvest the money from the car park. I'm confident that in terms of 365, as the next phase, because we can see phase one coming to shape now of the new metro station, with the new learning centre which exists up building, as we go on to develop the next phase which is the new cinema and associated shops in Barnhampton Street, I think it would be a good upturn in our town centre. But as you know yourself councillor Milburn, all town centres across the country are facing a crisis and are facing a difficult time. The rise of the internet, the click and deliver generation, out of town shopping, and yes, government policy in terms of business rates are hurting businesses. So I would advise you councillor Milburn, as a conservative member, to wake up the chancellor before this year's budget and ask him to do something positive to help save the shops on our high street.
Councillor Milber, can you sit down please, you've had your say, now we're going to move on, thank you. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health on early years and childcare initiatives. I will ask councillor Moira Smith to formally move the report, councillor Smith?
Right, thank you, Mr Mayor. Over the last year, South Tyneside's early years and childcare services has made continued progress for the safe, supporting strong independent families and ensuring local children get the best possible starting life. Following the recent extension of 15 hour free childcare offer to 30 hours, South Tyneside has achieved particularly high take-up rates for this offer. At the North East End count, 740 South Tyneside children have already accessed the 30 hours entitlement and take-up of a free education officer for eligible to be enrolled, it's also high. Ensuring local families to meaningfully access this offer is significant and valuable. Staff worked hard with local providers to ensure that sufficient provision was available. The success of our approach in this area was commended by the Secretary of State for Education. By proactively supporting high take-up of this offer, the council is enabling more parents to access employment by raising more children and ensuring more children have access to valuable higher quality early years educational opportunities. We are proud that in South Tyneside, this motion for the offer can be accessed through a range of high point flexible services. We are also proud that a portion of local childcare settings waiting for the oral standing by Ofsted is currently above the usual and national averages. The impact of this has been the significant improvements in the numbers of children achieving a quicker level of development at the end of the early years foundation stage. I hope on my House of Commons to endorse the efforts of the service to support our local children to have the best starting life, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Agreed.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report, councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am delighted to see the high uptake of free child childcare initiatives across the borough following the movement still being with the free childcare for 30 hours per week and the fact that 740 children who come to Tyneside are now receiving that their 30 hours allowance. I would also like to extend my thanks to all of the childcare providers as I know a lot of hard work is going to be increasing provision. I'm also pleased to see that South Tyneside has been committed from throughout with the policy of their secretary of state, but what is ultimately short is that it is disconcerting their fairness and should apply to hardworking people. And I would like to see that so many of our Tyneside residents are benefiting from this policy which is helping them to manage the cost of childcare that's also relying for their funding. On the subject of supporting hardworking people across the country, I would like to reiterate by comments on 8th September, I encouraged the council to think again about its opposition to the North East Devolution Deal that will see the people of South Tyneside miss out on a devolution deal worth £600 million over the next 30 years and expected to deliver £10,000 jobs to the region. We will miss out on so many of our children's, which happened in Tees Valley where the Conservative mayor, Ben Hanchin, was delivering for this region to split the law on Monday in his office with a vision to create high growth, low welfare economy. The Tees Valley's mayor yet puts them into our role and we need to work together as they have in Tees Valley, across the valley lines to mirror the success that they have through creation of the South Tees Development Corporation. For example, we should have steadily delivered £20,000 jobs over the next 25 years and hoping for a free call. Our call at the time could be free, but we need to bring devolution to South Tyneside to unlock these opportunities.
Well, Mr Mayor, I think it'd be very gracious with councillor Milburn because I can't see what a devolution deal, what relevance it has to this particular report. If councillor Milburn really wants to sort of help, then he can again ask his government to provide support to hardworking families who are having to go to food banks on South Tyneside. Councillor Milburn should be praising South Tyneside council that in the teeth of austerity, the worst cutbacks that we've ever had in local government finances and post-war Britain, this council has managed to keep every single one of our children's centres and sure starts open. That isn't the same in Conservative held councils where they're the first items of expenditure to take the bullet from the Conservatives because they don't see the value of children's centres and sure starts whereas this council does. And insofar as the devolution deal is concerned, the only good thing that the Tees Valley mayor is good at is taking the credit for the work of Labour council leaders on the Tees Valley. £600 million deal over the next 30 years councillor Milburn, £600 million over the next 30 years. The seven local authorities in the North East of England have had billions taken of them over the past 10 years from this government, billions taken from us. And we, unless on the south Tyneside side of the town, will not go for a deal which we don't think is in the best interests of our residents.
Councillor Milburn, please sit down, you've had your say, now we're moving on, is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the operations director on making communities safer. South Tyneside's Community Safety Partnership Plan. I will ask councillor Nancy Maxwell to formally move the report, councillor Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The community safety partnership hall works alongside a number of key partners who will increase from the fire authorities, probation services and internal housing products. It aims to contain to effectively and efficiently without purpose to address crime and disorder achieved within the borough. One element of this planning work is the Public Community Safety Partnership Plan. The plan takes into account national and local trends in crime and that disorder hanging and the report applies the context of the refresh Community Safety Partnership Plan 2018-2019. Recently published data reveals that during 2017, crime levels increased nationally by 10%. Across the Zomby and Wisples area, it increases 13%, whilst at Tyneside it increased to around 6%. However, a recent community safety study has identified that 98% of residents surveyed felt very or fearlessly living in their neighborhood even with this increase. And South Tyneside is among the top performing local authority areas within a table. There have also been a number of local successes against our key priorities throughout 2017, which include the light, the new light project established to manage individuals with complicated alcohol and related issues, five weekly mobile CCTV cameras and our operational hot spot locations, service development for victims of domestic abuse through complex means, and to argue resources developed at Sandown University to support the vulnerable to major crime. Speaking was to find us any absolute words of anti-safety. Based on improvements made by the partnership during 2017 and the data capture more recently, it has been agreed jointly among the strategic priorities for the community safety partnership of 2018-19. As a result of the community safety partnership, they have now prioritised violence against persons including domestic violence and abuse, youth-related disorder, non-physical abuse and environmental crime. A summary of the actions has been implemented in the plan for 2018-19 of violence against persons to develop a pilot, Save Aiden project for South Tyneside, so South Shields Town Centre, and develop a prevent, protect and provision based project to domestic violence and abuse, youth-related disorder, to develop a locality based youth provision and improve the information sharing on individual offenders. Now solutions, to take preventative approach to managing non-physical claims and remove non-managemental policing, environmental crime, to take a targeted proactive approach to reduce the main causes and to target environmental hotspots. Members are asked to know the report and contest the outcome, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak, councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am happy to support this report, we are at South Tyneside continuously to be the safest city, thank you.
Well, Mr Mayor, comes of course at a time when the news has come still, who himself has accepted an invitation himself to come to the next power council meeting, has warned that the continuing onslaught of cuts to the police force budget is undermining the effectiveness of the police force in the Northumbria force area. And of course you're now at the parliamentary select committee saying that the police because of the continuing cutbacks in their service budgets, they're becoming irrelevant to large parts of the community because they don't see the police on the streets, they're not sort of preventing crime, they're more original on detecting crime. So I mean, there's very little to cheer councillor Milburn from the Conservative government, but what you have is a report here that makes clear that there was a very strong partnership on South Tyneside, not only with the South Tyneside council and the police, but a whole range of agencies working together in extreme financial difficulties to make this area one of the safest in the Northumbria force area.
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the operations director on winter service 2018-19. I will ask councillor Nancy Maxwell to formally move the report, councillor Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report provides updates on early service activities. Whilst the previous project provides a challenging area, our social experience will effectively and there are no operations teams in the area this season. The whole process is well developed, weather forecasting, weather staging is very important, a great role of the footpath salt team, a winter management team and a manager's employees and the group plan, the policy is elements together. The authority will start the winter season with over 7,000 litres of salt in the latest effort. The salt is organised by four frontline protein makers with a fifth bacon, a spare which provides essential resilience when needed. Four gaits of salt from four primary rooms to ensure our transport and delivery is efficient. These vacants are complemented with small tubular header which can arrest hand-stated foods in that place during prolonged periods. On our footpath, the area management team provides smaller equipment to spread salt and where communalized baking, small doors are needed. Community groups and residents can help provide support in their local area and with council authorities with its neighbours to offer mutual support for our community. Members are asked to recall the winter season.
Is that seconded?
Agreed.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report, councillor Milburn?
Mr Mayor, thank you. And I'm happy to support this report and I think it shows that the council is very useful, can be if you're in any hardship with the work, as I know only too well myself that it's necessary now. However, one thing I think that we could do more of this, I think we could do more of this in the borough which is supporting children and doing that for children. What do you mean the council staff, for instance, as a lot of people have faced commenting that the council should be expected to clear all of the roads and pavements? Whether I think alongside this, we could perhaps consider bringing a campaign to maybe encourage residents to clear paths on the neighbors, maybe elderly for instance, and to do their vision. We could all do between and from all the, thank you.
Does any, does any of our member wish to speak on that? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the acting corporate director, Economic Regeneration, on extension of mandatory licensing scheme for houses in multiple occupation. I will ask councillor Mark Walsh to formally move the report, councillor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a report for informational data, councillor, these changes. It's the law made in council, not in the operation. From the 1st of October, the law changed the route for three-storey apartment from definition of a house to a room called operation. This means that any type of property including flats, providing final more people from two different houses without required licence. The change to the law also introduced two additional mandatory conditions which raise technical new ties to prevent historic correction. Often we work closely with community services and self-asseted college to try to identify inputs which can now be installed within the association. Or a voluntary aid problem to identify that has been set out for buying owners often changed the law potentially for licence. The council were patient and committed to effect the changes and provide appropriate funds to help apply for licence. Councillor Milburn, to come ahead for the report.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak to the report, councillor Milburn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am happy to support this report and I commend the council offices in carrying out this work. It is a positive thing to see that everyone is able to live and safe and disciplined. And the law I know now that is going to affect smaller group properties in the borough. It's weak to see that permanent living in council, extra powers to factor on smaller group landlords to now show some substantial accommodation at the time.
Councillor Walsh? Can I thank councillor Milburn for that? It's always great to have additional powers for local government, councillor Milburn. But what we also need is extra resource, which means extra finance. If austerity has come to an end, will you please advise your government to support local government in this year's budget?
Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule 10. No motions have been received under this rule. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.